It is 6:30 PM, Monday, January 8th, and we do have a quorum. We're going to call this workshop session the Lewisville City Council to Order. First item on the agenda is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Council, if you wouldn't mind taking a quick look through your packets. We are going to readjust the outline, so the very first item we're going to discuss is item seven, naming the fire training complex, the John Ashman Fire Training Complex.
Thank you.
Her family's here tonight, so. Item C, public input and discussion, an interim prohibition on short-term rentals. Liz, would you want to take us into?
Yes, Mayor.
Close session while we.
I would like to take it close under 551.071.
Want to do that right now?
Sure.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that now. So we're going to go into closed session regarding this one, then we'll right back up. All right. Item C is public input and discussion, interim prohibition on short-term rentals. Item six, consideration of ordinance of Lewisville City Council, city code for short-term rentals.
So there was one term that I want to get heard in, but no, quick. So we allow folks to ask, the vote, parking restricted on the street, what is the process for revoking that if they said, well, we did this two years ago, new neighbors moved in, and I want to take that back, what's that process?
The exact same process. So you just go through the exact same process to revoke it.
But it's like every, it's, everything wipes clean on 31st at December and you have to start over, is that what I'm reading here as far as the parking?
Item C.
The parking zone thing?
No, I think that's just for the, for the short-term part.
Okay.
Once you adopt it, it's in place.
And for clarity as well, there is a provision that if we have a public event on the street that has that, maybe we can, if there's a process for making sure that we can still serve the public interest and let cars park on that street.
Yes, we put in the ordinance that the city engineer has that authority.
Awesome.
So Mayor, just to be clear, you're moving that item up?
Yeah, we're going to move item, yeah, yeah, my apologies. We're going to move the STR stuff all to the front as well. So we're going to do naming, then the STR conversations, both pieces, and then we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing. So, public hearing item one is the thoroughfare plan. Item F, consent agenda. Approval of the minutes. Professional services agreement with HDR. Item four, bid award for opportunity intake.
I had a quick question on that, Mayor. So, it speaks of the pumps are 20 years old. I don't know if that's good or bad for a pump, and we have 40-year pumps, and that's not a great deal. If these pumps are out, live useful for 10 years already, that's a great deal. Do we know what the lifespan of these pumps actually should be?
Yep. First, just for clarification, it's actually, we're not replacing the pumps, we're doing the variable frequency drives as well as the electrical components. And Erin, how was the, what's the age they gave you on those?
So the max age that they recommend is 15 years. We're definitely past.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Other questions on that one? Item G five, acquisition of fee simple title to 3599 square feet, square phase one.
I think that's something that's needed to happen with or without a park.
It is for purposes of clarification.
This is the half, half of the existing street, the, the remaining half.
Well, to be clear, the southern, so it's a, it's a private drive.
Right.
The southern.
Two-thirds.
The southern lane, we own, but they have an easement, an access easement. And then northern lane, they own, but we have access.
Then we have an access easement.
And the, the northern part's a little bit shorter, the takes a little bit shorter, right Stacy?
A little bit.
Than the southern part.
Okay. It's half of that quarter. Thank you.
And again, it's a private drive, it's not a street.
Right, not a street. Item H, reports. Do we have anything on closed session?
It looks like a short meeting.
It's a taser. It's a taser.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to workshop session. Item B, presentation of results from our 2023 resident satisfaction survey. Mr. Pecky.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate your time this evening. I'm going to briefly go through a high-level summary of results from the 2023 Resident Satisfaction Survey. This is not all the details and all the cross tabs, it gives you some of the big numbers. Two things I want to point out to you before I dig into those numbers, though. Two things that are important to remember. The first is, we are in a very fortunate position in Lewisville. We are working off of some exceptionally strong survey numbers and trying to find ways to incrementally make them better. There are a lot of agencies out there, Washington, Austin, that would love to have our numbers. And there are a lot of cities in the metroplex that I have seen celebrate meaning 75 or even 80% satisfaction. We're up there around 90 year after year. So, our numbers are good, we're just trying to find a way to come a little bit better every year. And the second thing to let you know, just as a reminder, this survey tells us how people felt or what they thought at the time we asked it, it was a snapshot. That can change over time, that can change in a heartbeat if there's some big news story or some major event, but it doesn't tell us why. Now, we can use cross tabs and some comparative data and trending to figure out what we think is the why, but unless we do some additional surveying to ask the why question, we don't know for sure why they said one thing or another, why they gave a certain rating to this or a certain rating to that. So as we go through the numbers, just keep in mind, this is a snapshot of attitudes and satisfaction generally at the time we took it. And with that, I'll jump right into it. First slide is just an introduction, so we'll skip that. Remember, this is, this is conducted, that should say 2023 survey. Can you flip one more slide ahead? Okay, I missed that one, go back. So, now one's a three. It's trending to a three. Remember, this was conducted entirely online. And the reason that matters is it was an opt-in online survey. The reason it matters is an opt-in survey, people choose whether or not to take the survey. And what industry data shows is people who are very happy or very, especially very unhappy are more likely to opt-in than people who are kind of lukewarm in the middle. And as a result, the results of an opt-in survey tend to lean more toward the extremes. You have more people that are very happy, very unhappy, less in the middle. It also differs from a, a random sample telephone survey. We do that every two to three-year cycle, did one last year. And that's when you develop a data set, roughly 401, sometimes it's less, we go 401 because it gives you a 4% margin of error, where you reach out to four, you get 401 survey responses that roughly reflect the demographics of your overall community. And that gives you a scientifically valid, we know this percentage here is within four points of what it would be if we asked every single person in the city. We don't have this here. This does not have that same scientific validity, but what we do gain is quantity. We had more than 900 responses to this survey. And that quantity gives us a better aggregate that we can feel good about, understanding the demographic difference, and we'll talk about that in a later slide. We had 26 questions, no open-ended questions for this size survey, there's just so much data, and it takes so long already to deal with. We don't open any questions, we do those on smaller surveys. It was conducted August and September, and there's a 929, which is a good number for this slide. I already talked about more toward the positive and negative, and by the way, online surveys tend to run about three to six points lower than telephone surveys. And that is true across the board, that's nationwide. When cities, states, counties do these surveys, phone surveys tend to be three to six points higher. Now whether, there's a lot of speculation, is it because people on the phone don't want to tell you bad news? Is it because you get the random sampling, it's more accurate? We really don't know for sure, but we know that whenever we've done the phone surveys in order to kind of establish the standard, they have always been three to six points higher. You'll see some examples of that in the later slides. Our demographics did show, especially in these areas, a variance between who entered the survey and who lives in Lewisville. Tenure of residency, age, living arrangements, zip code, and race. So basically, this bullet here tells you, the people who took the survey tended to be older, more tenured, wider, and more likely to live in an owner-occupied home west of Interstate 35 than the average resident. So, this tells us that demographically, looking across the city geographically, we might not have an exact number, but again, the aggregate of 900-plus responses is still reliable. And then we get, oh, also, data shows that online surveys tend to be much more heavily influenced by social media activity. Makes sense, that's how you promote it, that's how people find it. They're living in social media all day long and reading all those wonderfully true statements that we all love to read, and then they come in here and do a survey based on those same statements. We'll get back to that in an important example later on.
That's a quick question about?
Yes, of course.
Go back.
Back on.
We talk about the cert, more older, more tenured, wider.
Yes.
Are those as compared to the percentage of Lewisville population or just within the survey itself?
Lewisville population.
Okay, so earlier we said we were 27% over 65, and that's saying that the respondents were generally, there's 35% were over 65.
Correct.
Fantastic.
Correct. We have, people in the survey tended to be older than the average in the city, they lived here longer, the average, it's like more than 15 years of residency in Lewisville, and that is not the average citywide. When you have 50% apartments, you know you're not getting 15-year residents and so forth. So in all of these, we just skewed from the demographic norm.
Thank you.
I will say that in general, our numbers this year were lower than in 2021, which is the last time we did a full online survey. But lower within what we call the statistical margin, which is roughly four points, four to five points. In most cases, they're within one or two points. Statistically, that's a dead heat. That's a winner by a nose, if you will, in a horse race. We really look for differences of 5% or more to know that there's an actual variance. And in most cases, we did not know that. Residents who've lived in Lewisville longer tend to have slightly less positive impressions of Lewisville than people who are newer residents. My own theory is some of those people are comparing Lewisville today to Lewisville from 1965. 1965 is gone, and it's never coming back, but they remember how wonderful in their memory Lewisville was, and in their memory, it was so wonderful, and today, it's not what it was then. That's my theory, I'll stand by it, but I can't prove it. Also, respondents in the 5, 6, and 7, 7 zip codes were generally more positive than the 5, 7, and 6, 7, but statistically, not by a lot. I'll give you an example, the, what we use as the satisfaction rating is when we ask them to evaluate Lewisville as a place to live. 75077 was 92.12% positive. 75067 was 86.14% positive. So they're all really strong, 86 to 92, and it's a six-point variance, enough that we can say, for whatever reason, people on the south side of Lewisville are slightly less happy than people on the north side of Lewisville, but 86% is still a great number. And then, our black, Latino, and Asian respondents tended to be slightly less positive in some areas, but pretty much within the statistical norm. And unfortunately, all three of these populations were underrepresented in the survey, and they have been historically. We've made some real gain with the black population, and we're starting to with the Asian population, Latino, we're nowhere close to 30% of respondents being Latino. We're just not even close to that.
So item 5056, this is all Castle Hills or this other part of?
Castle Hills plus East Lewisville, so Long Josie Lane on the north side where those places are by the marina. So all of 5, 6 in Lewisville. We don't ask the colony, they do their own survey. Okay, so this shows the demographics, and you see the breakdown here. Again, just showing that 42% of respondents have lived here 20 years or more. That is not true citywide, but of our respondents, it was. And then, children at home is a little bit more leaning toward no children at home, which is really 67%, roughly according to census data. Zip code is not evenly distributed, age not evenly distributed. We know these things, as long as we know them, we can account for them. Renters are also heavily underrepresented. We've made some progress here, we've done our multifamily outreach, we've done a lot of work to try and reach them. We only hit 5.5% of responses this year, but six years ago, it was 1.1% of responses. So we've made progress, a lot more to do. So here's your satisfaction, here's your report card grade. This is the grade we got for the year, it's an 87.64 satisfaction rating. And if you look at the trend, you know, this is when we ask very satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, very dissatisfied. The top two positives combined for 87.64%. We want to reach 90%, and we have some years, we've come just short of it some years, we were slightly off this year. We aim for a 25% positive intensity, and what you'll see is we had a 42.3% positive intensity. So 42.3% of survey respondents were very satisfied with the quality of life in Lewisville. I will take that number every day, I love that number. 2.82%, very unsatisfied, we'll keep working on them, but it's hard to get them up out of that level. Next slide. Here shows the trend, we do trend for these from 2014. That's the first year that we brought the survey in-house, started doing online surveys. You'll see, this kind of looks like a frowny face, but this is a very small scale. You're talking about ranging from 86% to 91, 92%. It's a very small margin, so overall, it's still a good trend. And remember, the phone survey in 2022 had a rating of 95%, about six points higher. So that's what we would expect to see. So don't be concerned about that, it is statistically a straight line. On the graphic, it's not. And you'll see, what I really like down here is the percentage of very satisfied has, where am I, of the orange, has gone up a lot. Now, last time in 2021, it was, it was right around 50, this time it was 42, still, above 40 is remarkable. And somewhat satisfied has gone down a little as those people switch to very satisfied. And that's the movement we're trying for. It's very hard to get very unhappy people to become happy. It's easier to get happy people to become very happy. We had a lot of success here, so really good numbers there. Next. Refer a friend, this is when we ask people, if someone you knew were moving into the North Texas area, would you suggest they move to Lewisville? 81% said yes. 36.6% said absolutely, said very likely that they would. So good numbers, we want 80%, we hit it, we want 40% positive, we're a little bit short, 36, 40, we can make that difference up. So, good numbers, only 7.67 said, no, they definitely would not. Slide. And this shows the trend, again, it's got some wiggle in it, but it's pretty much a straight line right across. Just above 80% on the average, and you will again see that the, these numbers are very consistent across the board, the very likely and the likely. It's just been a steady trend, we've seen some change year to year, and, but it's been pretty consistent overall. 76 to 84, that's been the rate. Excellent. The improvement grade, this is when we ask people, during the time you've lived in Lewisville, has the quality of life improved, stayed the same, or gotten worse? Big spoiler alert, those 20-plus-year residents were more likely to say it's gotten worse. Whereas the less than five-year residents were much more likely to say it's gotten better. So, when we look here, this is 2014, you see that it's 43% improved, now it's 46% improved. So, over the trend, it's pretty steady, but we're moving up as an overall trend, but in the 50s, now we're in the upper 40s, it has gone up over time. And the same is true down here, that the orange line has a generally upward trend, which is the, the improved category. Now I'll add here that one way you use this number is just to let us know, has the Lewisville 2025 plan been effective? The whole point of 2025 plan is come up with a better community, the kind of community we want to be when we turn 100 in, oh my gosh, 11 and a half months. And this tells us that we're making improvements, that people see improvements. Slide. Pocket look, this is when we ask people, we ask them a few questions about finance to make sure they knew, well, let me back up. No, no, that's right. We ask a few questions about finance, like, did you know that our tax rate is the lowest it's been in, you know, 30-plus years? Did you know that half our budget goes to public safety? Did you know that two-thirds of your tax bill goes to the school district? To check awareness. Then we ask them, how satisfied are you with the services you receive from the city in exchange for the property tax you pay us? And what you'll see is 62.9 here, 78.66 there. That's an upward trend. That's not up every year, but over the course of the years, from 2014 to 2023, it has gone up 16 points. So we believe we're doing a good job of educating people on those important facts, and that they are satisfied with the services they are receiving. Positive intensity of 25.64 is the second-best positive intensity we've had, and it was twice what it was just four years ago. So people are happier now with the service they receive than they were in 2019 by a significant margin. Again, we tried for 80%, 20% positive, we got the 20% positive, we're just barely shy to 80%, statistically, it's a dead heat. Safety grade, we ask them to rank various areas of the city, some of them day and night, some just across the board. Tell us how safe you feel. What we found is there's a 92.39% of the people that were surveyed said they feel safer, very safe in the city of Lewisville. Compare that to social media, you're not getting 92.39%. But when we ask people questions and they dig on the record with it, we're getting good numbers. And you'll see, in 2017, it was 80%, now it's 92%, which says something good's happening, where we're getting some progress out there. We did, it's the next slide, positive intensity was down a little bit, in 2021, it was 60% positive, we're like, wow, oh my goodness. It went down a little bit to 37%, but that's the second-highest number we've had, so I'm not concerned about that one. Next slide.
James, we're going to have to put 10 in it.
Oh, I'm so close, okay.
I'm sorry, I did this, it's going to be 7 o'clock, so we're going to get over there.
I'll ask some questions, so James. You'll be here, you'll be here in the end, we can pick this up. Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you, sir. All right, folks, we're going to close the workshop and get into regular session. We're going to pause the work. It's 7:03 PM, and we will call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to Order. We do have a quorum. First stop on tonight's agenda, we have Councilmember Green with the invocation.
Please stand. Just wanted to really quickly say that, you know, before I, before I came here tonight, I, I saw what was going on over in Fort Worth, and so I just wanted to say, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with, you know, everyone over there, the families, the people involved, and hoping that there's a positive outcome from that. So please pray with me. As we stand on the threshold of a new year, we come before you with hearts full of anticipation and gratitude. We thank you for the gift of life and for the journey that has brought us to this moment. We acknowledge the highs and the lows of the past year and know that through it all, your presence has been constant source of strength and hope. We pray for your guidance in the coming year, fill our hearts with love, hope, joy, peace, and grace, and give us your discernment and wisdom to make the right decisions for our great community. In your name, we welcome this new year with the confidence that you will be with us every step of the way. Amen.
Councilmember Jones?
Please join me in the pledges to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. We are going to take things a little bit out of order tonight. First item up is item G seven, if there's no objection from the council.
No objection.
All right. Item G seven, consideration of naming the fire training complex, the John Ashman Fire Training Complex, in honor of former division chief of training, Mr. John Ashman. The city has partnered with the town of Flower Mound and the city of Highland Village to build two training buildings on property owned by Lewisville. This property currently has a training tower, apparatus bay, storage building, and various training props. Staff proposes naming the fire training complex, the John Ashman Fire Training Complex, in honor of former division chief of training, John Ashman, in recognition of his contributions to the city. And it is recommended that the city council approve the naming of the fire training complex as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the fire training complex as set forth, as set forth in the caption above.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for the naming as the John Ashman Fire Training Complex. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes unanimously. I believe we have the Ashman family here as well tonight, as well as, of course, a significant chunk of our fire department. I hope those relationships we have with other cities to cover for us are working well. There's a lot of you guys here, I appreciate that. But we're incredibly proud of Mr. Ashman and what he gave to the city. He made so much impact within the region as far as being able to train. I don't know a firefighter around that doesn't have kind words to say about his competency and the tools that he gave them. So I want to thank you guys, and thank Lewisville as a whole for continuing the traditions of the fire department, including the training at incredibly high levels. Whoever's filling the shoes of Mr. Ashman has large ones to fill. Do we have any comments from the fire department at this time? None? I think there is a request that we did a quick photo out front, so council, if you wouldn't mind, we're just going to walk right out front and get a quick photo, and then we'll come right back. Next up on the agenda, we're going to move to item C, public input and discussion, an interim prohibition on short-term rentals. To speak in person during the public input and discussion, an interim prohibition on short-term rentals portion of this agenda, you must sign up to speak before the meeting begins with the city secretary. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, you will not be allowed to speak again on this item during the remaining portions of this meeting. Written public comments may be submitted through e-commerce comments, and to access the ecomments, you can go to, and I'm not going to read the whole HTTPS, but it is printed in the document here, and you can use the ecomments link. Ecomments were accepted until 5:30 PM of today, and so we're going to do C one, public input and discussion on an interim prohibition on short-term rentals. Just some quick comments, on November 27th, 2023, city staff provided an option for council to consider the adoption of a one-year temporary prohibition for new short-term rental units within the city of Lewisville. This temporary prohibition is separate from the proposed operational regulations for short-term rental units in item G six of this agenda. Staff is seeking additional public input and council discussion. And it's recommended that the city council conduct a public input session and discussion as set forth in the caption. So we're going to go ahead and open the public input session. I do have a few comments here, so we'll go ahead and get started. First comment I have here is from Ms. Ainsley Stelling. We've got your packet, Stelling.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Ms. Stelling, name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, please.
Ainsley Stelling, 1001 Forest Park Drive. Before I touch on the packet while it's still being passed out, I wanted to say I'm in support of the one-year prohibition of new short-term rentals. With any good scientific project, the hypotheses are only best tested when you have a cap on your population. If you have a population that's fluctuating, how best do you test your hypothesis, and if the STR ordinance is really working? Secondly, I know that in the ordinance, there's the proposal for two citations in a 12-month time span. Completely support this. We've spoken several times over the last several months that there are bad actors or bad apples that we want to get rid of. And if people have a problem with two citations in a 12-month period, if the shoe fits, I'm just saying. So, coming back to my, my handout, I want to thank.
Ms. Stelling, I'm going to, I'm going to pause you there for just a second. You absolutely have the opportunity to speak to the actual ordinance that will be coming up next. Right now, we're specifically talking about the interim prohibition.
Okay. My misunderstanding.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's okay.
I thought it was all being grouped together.
I should have been more clear in what we're doing.
Okay, my apologies, my apologies.
But, but am I, am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm so sorry, thank you.
And that's fine, well, I'm going to keep your card aside for, for that next one, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
And since. And since I created a little bit of confusion here, we're going to make the same request of everybody here. So there's two things that you can public comment on tonight. Well, aside from the rest of the agenda, but if you're here for the STR, short-term rentals, there are two things that we're accepting public comment on. The first is a more, I'm sorry, an interim prohibition. Okay? So are you in favor of that? You against that? Plus pros or cons? Okay? The second, which we will be taking up in a moment, will be the actual ordinance itself for STRs within the city of Lewisville as written. Okay? So if you put in a comment card, I'm not sure if you put it in for the first item or the second item, because it's not clearly delineated on these cards. But if it is for just the interim prohibition, we're gonna take those comments now. Okay? So if I call your name or your card and you want to pass, you can go ahead and say pass or just tell me I want an interim prohibition. I don't want an interim prohibition. We can move on from there, just in the interest of everyone's time tonight. Fair enough? All right. Diana Pham does not wish to speak, but you are in support, sorry, Ms. Pham, the interim prohibition. You're in support or against interim prohibition?
Against.
Okay. And I'll keep your card if you want to speak in the second half. Juan Salazar? Yes, sir. Did you want to speak on the interim prohibition?
No, the next up.
Thank you, sir. Vohiu? Did you want to speak on the prohibition or did you want to speak on, or both? The prohibition? Okay.
Can I speak on both? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You may speak on both. Yes, sir.
Okay. I can speak at the.
Sir, if you're gonna speak, I'll need you at the podium. Mr. Juan Salazar? And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Hello, my name is Juan Salazar, 1511 Camelia Drive in Lewisville.
Thank you, sir.
Well, firstly, I would like to say that the short-term rentals shouldn't be a prohibition because it helps a lot of people like me to send my kids to the university. These short-term rentals Airbnb, there is no harm for the city. On the other hand, they bring more people for restaurants, gas stations, small donuts shops, and it helps the city with taxes as well. The city of Irving, Garland, and the Colony, they are receiving 7% to 9% on city taxes. So we are helping our community. Most of these people comes out of the state. Airbnb has this strict rule of background check on all of the tenants. All of them need to be in a background check. Hotels, they don't do background checks. You don't know who stays on the hotels. So it's more secure to stay on Airbnb than the hotel. That's why some people prefer to stay in a place where they feel safer than a hotel because they don't have to deal with other people there. Most of the tenant has cameras there. And it helps. I think Airbnb, the short-term rentals, help the city and the community. I know there is good people and bad people, right? Some people do big parties. Yeah. But other people that don't do short-term rental, they do parties and they are loud as well. So the police is called and they solve the problem. But I don't think Airbnbs are the most tenants that do all this disturbing. I think Airbnb benefits nowadays with this economy, with this high interest on mortgages, and also the inflation. Everything is, the prices are higher and higher. And this type of short-term rentals, it help people to relieve some of these expenses. I know some people, maybe they don't need that. They have a great job making three figures. But the working class, that they see this as an opportunity to send their kids to the university and pay the mortgages. And for some people, this is the only way when you lose your job and pay your mortgage and don't lose your house and don't go to bankruptcy or the bank repossess your house. I think this benefit to a lot of people. There is rules on Airbnb where you can say there is no smoking of any kind, no drugs, no alcohol. 10:00 AM is the curfew. You cannot do any loud after 10:00 PM. I'm sorry. There is rules there. So it's regulated there. Parking lots, mostly the tenants comes with one car, maximum two. And houses has parking lot by the garage, which is two, and you have three at the front, and you have five parking spaces. So the parking won't be any problem because the tenants count the one or two cars, no more than that. It's a three-two family home, and they don't come with too many cars. That's what I want to conclude, that Airbnbs don't do any harm to the city. On the other hand, they'll help with taxes and people spending, helping small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. Mr. Salazar, I have a couple of questions. Over here, I have a couple of questions for you, if you will mind.
If you could come to the podium, sir.
Just to the podium? Yes. Thank you. Yes. First off, thank you for taking time to come out and speak today. I know it's not, that's not an easy spot to be in, so I appreciate that. Can you tell me how many Airbnb you have?
Yes. I do have four Airbnbs.
Are they all located in Lewisville?
No. I have one in Lewisville and one in Irving and two in the Colony.
And you gave an address. Was that the address of your Airbnb or is that the address of your home?
It's the address of my home.
So you are in Lewisville? How long have you been operating Airbnb?
I've been doing this for five years, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize if I get the names a little backwards. You can absolutely correct me. I'd appreciate it. And again, this is for the interim prohibition on Airbnbs for the moment.
Okay. My name is Hylvo on 919 Stony Brook Drive in Lewisville. And I'm a single person at 60 years old. Airbnb helped me pay second bill, whatever I need. I don't have rich uncle. I'm by myself, and I've been Airbnb three years. And my customers, they are nice. They come with single person, one room. They never bother the neighborhood. The apartment behind me is the one had loud music. And my neighbor, he had six car. I has only three car in front of my house. I don't bother nobody. And then my customer, they always told me that they enjoy to go order restaurant around here, this old downtown Lewisville area. So I don't see how you guy again Airbnb with me is, that's my second income and KF. I lose my job. That's the only thing I fall back to.
Thank you.
Ms. Oh, I'm sorry, I have the same question. So how many Airbnbs do you own?
Just one in town.
I'm sorry, you said just one in town?
Just one this time. Yeah.
Just one? Okay. And that's in Lewisville?
I had room there. No party, nothing.
And that's in Lewisville? And the address that you gave, was that, do you live in Lewisville or is that the address of your Airbnb? So the Airbnb and your address is Lewisville, sir? Okay, fantastic. And how long have you had the Airbnb?
Three years now.
Thank you.
Gary Ferguson?
Mr. Ferguson, if I could just have you focus on the interim and then? I was saying, I did prepare for both.
Yes, sir. But I'll make sure your call to get to the other.
Gary Ferguson, 111 Firewater Circle, Lewisville, Texas. I mean, bit of a quandary here because I'm in opposition to having a one-year ban. But I mean, in our, the Texas Neighborhood Coalition believes that there should be a ban for one year. However, I think it's unfair on individuals who already impacted by these short-term rentals to reduce the competition. And it's, there's a number of problem short-term rentals that will only benefit by having a one-year stay on a prohibition on new STR. So that's one of the concerns I have, although I'm in favor of, agree with Ainsley in principle. The city has made progress towards interim solution that may reduce the negative impacts. But I think it's still not a fair solution for neighbors of existing STRs to ban it for another year, ban any new STRs because we'll continue to have those impacts on us. And the Airbnb, the previous, people spoke about Airbnb doing checks. They don't do checks. I signed up with my new phone number to test the rental on Airbnb, and they provided me the full rental just on the phone number. Did no checks at all. So that is not a true statement. The other thing we'll bring up later is progress towards platform accountability, which I haven't seen being brought up since the last discussion. It was mentioned, but it wasn't brought up specifically. And the other thing is, we keep mentioning the 10:00 PM noise curfew. But the problem with short-term rentals is you have noise continuously all day, especially all summer long. And most people will have party and then nothing for a week or so. With short-term rentals, they party, they leave, the next one comes in, they party. So it's a consideration for daytime noise as well, not just nighttime. But in principle, I think that we need to really think about one-year prohibition on short-term rentals. And I'm in the position that I'd follow what Texas Neighborhood Coalition suggests. But as Councilwoman Green mentioned in the last meeting, she has a concern that we will be impacted. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ferguson? I'm sorry, before you go. I'm not sure I understand. So you're against a one-year prohibition, a one-year ban? Can you elaborate on that? I don't know why. I don't understand.
If it comes to answer the question, I'm against the one-year prohibition for the reasons I gave. But I will go along the line of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition.
So I don't think I didn't grasp the reason. Can you restate those for me, please? I didn't understand the reasons.
The reason for that is if we block all new short-term rentals from coming into the, under the new ordinance, then the existing short-term rentals will benefit for a full year with no extra competition. And we will get the impacts for a full year without any mitigation unless, obviously, the ordinance gets passed and full actions are taken when we have noise violations and other problems with short-term rentals. If we have more short-term rentals that are falling under the ordinance, there'll be less pressure on us than individuals that live next to these short-term rentals that face the full brunt of this problem.
Just to be clear, this isn't an either or, right? You can do both. You can have the ordinances and the ban.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have a comment card here from Quaklam. And my apologies, again, here to support. Are you in favor of a interim prohibition or are you against an interim prohibition, sir?
Against.
Against? Okay. And then I'm assuming you wish to speak on the ordinance itself in a moment?
No, I'm not speaking. Just a.
Oh, but you can answer questions? Okay. I've got it. Got it. All right. We do have a comment that was submitted via ecomments, and that was Mr. Timothy Gorts. Mr. Gorts owns their STR, been promised by the city they're not going to regulate and are pro-STR and small business. We should be treated as any homeowner renting a private property and not be subjected to special terms, taxes, and parking regulations on public streets. We should be grandfathered in with no new regulations. We did also receive an email comment from Airbnb. I don't think it made my list, but they were, in general, amenable to the ordinance as written. They were not amenable to the prohibition, the interim prohibition. All right. So that is the public input on short-term rental interim prohibition. Liz, I don't have anything here saying that there's a vote or any. So we've gotten the comments on that. So that's the first piece. We'll go ahead and move on to item six, which is, yeah. Gotcha. So we won't pile that into the other part? Okay, that makes sense. Counsel, we'll take some comments regarding the interim prohibition. Yeah. You want to go, Ronnie? Okay. Okay. Awesome. Okay. That didn't work out so well for me last time. So I'm gonna reserve the right to speak again at the very end once I hear everybody else's comments. So I will say I am in favor of the one-year prohibition for a couple of reasons, but not the least of which is that some of the problems other cities have had with trying to pass ordinances is that the genie was already out of the bottle. So when you look at the Austin lawsuit, the problem they had, they tried to go back to tier two. They'd go back and they tried to sunset STRs that were already in place. That's where they ran it. That's one of the places they ran afoul. So we have a relatively small number of STRs in Lewisville right now. I think last count was around 100 or so. And I have this fear that over the next year, doubles, triples, because we saw a very positive trajectory going up. And I would like to study more, see what's going to happen. This goes beyond how long it's gonna take us to get an ordinance in place. But it's also to go out there and make sure we don't have a proliferation of these short-term rentals before we really fully understand the impact. And then try to undo it once that genie's out of the bottle. So I want to pause there and yield the floor.
Okay. I'll give my thoughts, which are really not much different than what I've kind of already stated in prior meetings. I am not supportive of a one-year ban on the STRs, mostly because I feel like, you know, homeowners do have a right to rent out their place for whatever reason. And as long as we have proper regulations in place, which honestly, when we first started talking about the temporary ban, I mean, we were talking about all sorts of things of what we were gonna put together with this ordinance. I had no idea we were gonna end up with the ordinance that we have, which I feel like is pretty comprehensive. And I feel like it's going to knock out 98% or 99% of the problems here. But also, I mean, if we're talking about what are the problems? You know, we, I think we have almost 100 STRs right now that we know of. There's really just a handful of them that are problems. I want to tackle the problems. I don't want to prevent other people from being able to rent out their property. Now, I will say, one of the things I did not realize was that it was gonna take us a little bit because we have to hire a third party, we have to get the system set up, and we gotta get everybody registered. So there is going to be some time between now and when the ordinance is gonna take place, which, what was that date, Claire? Was it in July or June? July 8, I think, is what it said.
That's correct.
So I think I could be supportive of a temporary ban going up to the, when the new regulations go live for new STRs. I mean, I do have some questions about how we're gonna, how are we gonna know if it's a new STR? But I could get on board with that. But for a year, I don't think there's any reason to keep people from renting out their own property, especially since we don't do that with longer-term rentals. So I'll yield the floor at that.
I'll be very brief. I support the one-year ban for all the reasons Patrick said. I'm like, let's give ourselves times to right-size as we work with the people that we, with the people that are already in there. the people that are already in there, because we're going to have to do some tweaking probably of the ordinance anyway. So I'll yield back my time.
Are we going on times here? Kristen said just about everything I was going to say. If we have, if we're voting for an ordinance, and it's a pretty comprehensive ordinance, I really don't see the need for a temporary ban or moratorium. And what are we, if there's something that just absolutely doesn't exist right now, what are we banning? We're banning the thought of somebody starting something new during the middle of all this. And there is a roughly, a little under 100 on the platforms that we looked at, but I was looking at some stuff that shocked me to all these other platforms I had no idea about. And there was already 173 on those. So this is, this quote temporary ban, moratorium, prohibition, whatever you want to call it, they all effectively mean the same thing, is just flies in the face of property rights, and I do not support it.
This is obviously a very difficult, complicated issue to talk about. I can see both sides of this. I can see, you know, hard-working people who are trying to survive in this economy and trying to use the system that is in place. I also see that we need time to reset and look at this thing. Because once you start looking at this thing and start looking at, even in the period to July 8, I guarantee you there's going to be other things that come up that we haven't thought about. So I think, and we can always come back and change this if we feel that after a certain amount of time, that we've got all our answers covered. But I'm on board with supporting the prohibition for a year.
As Councilman Meredith said, this is a complicated, complicated issue. But I guess at this point, I'm, I can, I'm willing to support a temporary prohibition until our ordinance goes into effect. But I don't think, I don't see any, I don't see the utility of having a prohibition after we have the ordinance in effect. So.
So I believe that's to get some direction from staff to come back with, because there's no language in the ordinance that speaks to interim prohibition.
Eric Gilmore, I would like to say one more thing here. The concept of private property rights is not absolute, just like free speech is not absolute. I can't open up a pawn shop out of my house. I can't open up a grocery store out of my house. I can't, I can't open up a restaurant in my house. There's things that I can't do. The whole reasoning behind zoning is to protect and make sure that people's property and businesses as well can operate in places where they're going to do the most good for the city as a whole. So we have zoning specifically, and allowed specifically, to create zones and zoning ordinances that affect people's right-toe property. That's what zoning is. So I can't get on board behind the concept that the right-toe property and do with it as you wish is absolute, because it's just not.
Thank you. And I think we've at least got consensus on some sort of interim prohibition. The length of that seems to be up for debate. I don't have any language here to actually build that. So what would have to happen is that we'll need staff to come back with two options, it looks like, either a six-month or a year, and go ahead and get, get a council to vote on that as soon as we can.
Would you want us to bring that back for a vote before we bring that all the way through P and Z to get direction? Or do you want us to run it through P and Z first, the recommendation?
I think we need to run it through P and Z because that's the process. I don't want to short-circuit the process.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we've had that. All right, moving on. Thank you all for speaking on that. Thank you all for your input and insight, both residents and council. It's appreciated. Item six, consideration of an ordinance of the Louisville City Council, amending the Louisville City Code by amending section 4-151, definitions of chapter four, to amend the definition of property manager and add a definition of short-term rental STR unit, adding a new division four, short-term rental units to chapter four to adopt STR regulations, adding a new section 15-139, limited parking zones to chapter 15 to adopt parking permit regulations, amending article three, hotel occupancy tax of chapter 14 to clarify the remittance and audit of hotel occupancy taxes for STRs, amending section 4-198B, floor area of chapter four to clarify the application of the International Property Maintenance Code regulations to the floor area of room dimensions, amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville to include a fee for short-term rental unit permits, providing a repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. After extensive public input and research on issues related to short-term rentals, STR staff is proposing regulations that will go into effect on July 8, 2024. These regulations include a permitting process and fee inspections, operational requirements, and a process for revoking permits. The proposed regulations also create a limited parking zone which can be utilized citywide regardless of the presence of an STR and clarifies the remittance and audit of hotel occupancy taxes for STRs. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. And we're going to go ahead and open this to public comment. And I do have those cards available. We have Mr. Kwaklam available. He is in support of STRs, but does not wish to speak, is available to answer questions. Mr. Gary Ferguson?
Gary Ferguson, 1111 Firewater Circle, Louisville, Texas. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Thanks for your draft ordinance proposed. While the current draft is an excellent start and should be implemented as soon as possible to help stem the destructive tide of short-term rentals, it falls short in several key areas, and the ability to update the ordinance in these areas in future will be greatly appreciated. It's a great start, but obviously, as long as we're able to improve it in the future as things evolve, that'd be excellent. One of the things it doesn't specifically address is noise concerns, and we obviously have a very good set of ordinances on the books for noise concerns. The problem that short-term rentals bring is that they have people coming to party and enjoy a great time. Then they leave at their party for a couple of days, all day long, all night long. Then they leave, another bunch comes in, same thing again. And I've got so much evidence of this over the past year, specifically during the summertime. It's just crazy. We have no time to rest because there is not really a good noise ordinance for short-term rentals specifically. And that's really a major problem for us. We have no time. We have, we have continuous noise problems in the neighborhood. When, as these transients come through, seven or eight vehicles come into the property, first thing they do is start screaming, shouting, and going crazy outside. And that disturbs us. We, you know, we, fairly quiet neighborhood. So I believe that we should at least address noise, short-term rentals coming into quite, previously quiet neighborhoods, and what the noise pollution, noise nuisance is as well. I didn't see anything about platform oversight in the regulations, the ordinance proposed. I didn't have enough time to read through it in detail, though, so there might be something that comes up in the future. In conclusion, the ordinance fails to address some core concerns of residents facing noise and noise nuisance issues. I urge the council to consider the following recommendations: Implement zoning restrictions to limit STRs in sensitive, previously quiet areas. These STRs are changing the nature of some of the areas where people live. And this is a problem. It's a violation of our property rights. They have property rights, but we have property rights too, and they've been violated by these short-term rentals. We have no concern for the neighborhood. They're always concerned about themselves and how they can pay things and do things, but they have no concern for the neighborhood. This has been coming up throughout the conversations with all these people. It's all about themselves. It's not about the rest of the stakeholders, the neighbors. Those are the people that are getting impacted by this. And fortunately, most of you don't live next to a short-term rental, so you haven't experienced this. But I'm busy documenting over the next year experiences that we have, so you can see that. Additional points to consider: The proposed ordinance requires property managers for short-term rentals. At this point, we're acting as property managers because there's nobody available to talk to. The only option we have when noise gets excessive is to call the police. But there's a fine line between calling the police for noise when it's been going on for hours and hours, and they come and maybe stop by then. So we just experience a problem on an ongoing basis. So, and then the property owners even said to us, no, don't text us if there's a problem. Don't call us, don't text us. So what do we do? We're just left in the lurch. So there needs to be something in the ordinance that allows us to contact the property manager and say, hey, there's a noise at this property. Please calm it down. So we don't have to call the police all the time and say, hey, come out there. Then they arrive too late, and the noise is gone. It's still there. Or it's gone. We don't know. So just having the ability to contact the property manager as residents and say, hey, we have a problem. There's too much noise in your property. Do something about it before we call the police. The property next door to me had so many noise complaints, but we couldn't call the police all the time. The police even came out there one night and observed the property and saw the noise that was going on there. In our quiet neighborhood, everything else is silent, and there's screaming and shouting going on. But we didn't call it in. We should have, but I've been having so much that, you know, cry wolf, you know what I'm saying? And then they arrive, and by then I might have calmed down. So the noise ordinance needs to be addressed as well. One of your officers came out there one night when there was a problem, and he said, well, you know, people like to have a party and yell at, you know, at a football match. Sure, that's fine. But it doesn't go on seven days a week and have different people. So you don't know who the people are, if they're going to be a problem, if they're going to attack you if you report to the police. This is what we face. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Diana Pham? I have here that, oh, you do not wish to speak. That's fine. Are you in support of STRs?
Yes.
Okay. Do you vote? Did you want, did you want to speak further on, in support of STRs, or did you? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Salazar? Did you, did you want to speak further on the ordinance, or are you okay?
Yes. Okay, I see right here the ordinance. It's pretty long and it stands. It's talking about $400 per unit. I don't know if you see it on the city, but two years ago, I had a restaurant in Carrollton, and the permit for the whole year for the restaurant was $300. I think, I think $400 is kind of excessive. I mean, we are not getting rich at these Airbnbs. We're barely making it. It helps, yes, but not to put a lot of money on the bank. It's a way to survive in this economy. We're not getting rich. I don't know if, right here, I didn't have the time to read the whole thing, but like I say, other cities are charging between 7 and 9% on city fees. And that is paid by the, by the tenants. So... It talks as well about the, about the parking spaces. I think I explained on my last talk about the parking spaces. It's only one or two cars, and houses has more than four or five parking spaces. I don't think that you need to mark or place in a note in your front door stating that you are the owner of the Airbnb. It's going to take to retaliation. It's dangerous if you put a sign on your door where you say this is an Airbnb. It causes really big problems. The privacy of the homeowner needs to be intact. This is something that goes, it needs to remain anonymous, not public, because some people that they are not agree with Airbnbs, they could take, they could do something. So we have to protect the homeowners in this matter.
Sir, I think that's referring to the inside.
Oh, the inside?
Yeah, not the outside.
Sorry, my bad. Okay. Okay, and... That'd be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Appreciate your input. Ms. Stelling?
I'm on topic this time.
We got you. We got you.
Ainsley Stelling, 1001 Forest Park Drive. Thank you, council, staff, for all the hard work that you all have put into this topic over the last four to six months. I know it has been excruciating, and you've been listening to both sides of the street, and it's greatly appreciated. We definitely see your hard work in all of this. So thank you. I do want to request a density clause be added to this ordinance. I'm speaking of a park-place neighborhood that has 20 houses. The city is wanting to revitalize Lake Park. We want the creation of the Lake District, create a tourist destination. We have the improvements to North Mill Street coming this month. We've already lost one long-term resident because of a short-term rental owner, and her house was purchased to become our second short-term rental in the neighborhood. So therefore, 15% of our neighborhood, or 27.27% of our block face, is already short-term rentals. And Ms. Cade, I remember you making this statement back in September, September 11. I had to go back and remind myself, that our neighborhood has a density problem. And there's an absolute need to address in our STR regulations that three STRs on two streets is too much for one area. There are university studies that show the increase in the number of short-term rentals in a neighborhood brings an increase in crime, not overnight, but over time. The first one, University of Cadiz in Barcelona, Spain, in 2020, large-scale conversion of housing units into short-term rentals undermines a neighborhood's social organization and its natural ability to counteract and discourage crime. Because when you have fewer long-term residents, you have fewer people to monitor the neighborhood, because everybody's coming and going, coming and going, coming and going, coming and going. Northwestern University had a similar study with similar results, that tourists act differently in true tourist destinations. How I act in my home is the same as how I acted when I was in the Bahamas at our Airbnb. But that's not true for everybody. We can go to Florida for spring break, and college students don't act the same in Florida on spring break at those tourist destinations as they do in their college dorm. So if there's a density clause and there's only a limit to the number of STRs that are in a neighborhood, people that are staying at a short-term rental are more likely to behave because they're in a short, they're in a residential neighborhood, and we're monitoring. I know that we are not naive enough to think that the overtaking of a neighborhood by short-term rentals would never happen. Waco has seen it. Fredericksburg has seen it. We can't think that it wouldn't happen to us if we didn't implement a density clause into this ordinance. Therefore, I'm requesting verbiage very similar to what San Antonio and Ulysses already have in their short-term rental ordinances. Short-term rentals shall be limited to no more than 1/8th or 12 and 1/2% of total number of residential units. more than 1/8 or 12 and 1/2% of total number of residential units on a block, block face or in a multifamily building. This protects the residents. This protects small neighborhoods like my own where we have no HOA. We back up to the lake. The city is about to do wonderful improvements to the area, but we don't want to feel like we're going to be driven out of Louisville because our streets become a hotel district. That's not what we were zoned for. We're a single-family residential neighborhood and we want to remain that way. So I'm, I'm begging that we implement this before it becomes a problem instead of trying to backpedal on the back end because we all know you can't put that genie back in the bottle. So that is my request that I humbly make before you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stelling.
Do we want to bring up, we've discussed density?
So it's...
I think this would be a good time to bring it up and it's been shot down legally.
So that...
Yeah.
That one has?
That, that is, that is something I agree with. I mean, if, since you were pointing me out, I'm going to tell you, and I've said it to everybody, there is an issue with density when you, when you start getting lopsided. But even if we went against legal advice and put a density clause in there, it's not going to affect that street because it's not retroactive. And I do not disagree with you at all on that subject. I do not disagree with you on that.
Mr. Mayor, if we're going to have dialogue from the audience, then either you come to the mic or...
Yeah, either come to the mic, absolutely. So, um, at, at this point, I think we're done with, with public comment. So we appreciate the input and, and the time. If, if this passes, there's still time to have more conversation. If you, if you want to put in more input or reach out to your council, we're all public citizens here. Uh, but I think in order to maintain the, the meeting and the structure that it, that we have to by state law, uh, we're going to go ahead and not get into a dialogue back and forth, um, on this here. Uh, if there are any comments to be made by council at this time, um, y'all are welcome to do that. Um, and if there are no comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I have, I have a couple. I have a couple of comments. So first off, um, as was already said here a couple of times, this has been difficult. There's been, um, there's been more discussion around this topic than anything else since I've been on council for a year and a half. And I appreciate everybody's input, pro and con, whether on council or, or from the public. So that all helped me inform and formulate opinions. That has, it's actually changed a little bit since we first started this conversation. So, so I've, I've moved a little bit from position one where I was to position two. So really appreciate all the hard work. I, I will say, because we just talked about this a second ago, Fredericksburg, um, 25% of their housing inventory is STR right now. Uh, it's, it's a lot. We saw this at the, at the Planning Association meeting. We had a representative there talking. And that's one of my concerns about the genie back in the bottle. That's why I'd like as long a runway as possible to have prohibitions. So that, that just reinforces my concern about, about not having a prohibition on the, uh, on the books toward and see what's going to happen over next year. Uh, that's all I have to say. I'm, I'm ready to motion, but I want to yield the floor to other comments, please.
Councilman Troyer? I'm going to start on this end again since, since we don't, typically we're going from my left to the right, but I'll, I'll mix it up today. Councilman Troyer, do you have any comments?
I'm in favor of the ordinance, but nothing other than that. No, it is, and like I said, it is a difficult issue. So no more comments.
Councilman Meredith, any comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the ordinance. I, I do think that, um, we could, we could potentially look at the, the density thing at a later, later time. I think we, again, with everything we do, we, it's, it's hard just to say right now to look at the density. I think you're going to look at it. You gotta, you really gotta dive into it and, and look at the details before you do something like that. We need to really study that. So like the mayor said, I think we can bring that back at a later date, but I think we need to keep with the, the ordinance we have tonight and, and stick with that.
Well, since, um...
Councilman Cade is, is, is electing not to speak or are you just going to say?
I've spoken like 5,000 times on this. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion in, in a second and...
I thought she was looking at me. So, um, first off, I want to thank the staff and I want to thank the community for coming in and giving their input on both sides of the issue. Um, it's a challenging issue and as I talked to some of you, I've, I've openly stated that, you know, we're going to get something done and it won't be perfect. And we shouldn't let perfection, uh, stop our progress from getting this done. And the reason I think that we need to get this done is we need to, because we're pushing back the clock. And so we can revisit, uh, certain items to see if that fits. That's the reason I'm, I'm kind of for the prohibition. It gives us an opportunity to look at what works and what doesn't work. And we can adjust that if we need the, the prohibition as well. The, the ordinance, this is not how we normally do business. Normally we have a long runway to get something figured out. And this, this time our staff has been rushing and working double time on top of the jobs and projects that they already have. Um, I, my suggestion is to get this ordinance on the book, let the staff get, get teed up. And we're, someone was talking about the cost of the, uh, uh, yeah, of the, of the fee. The fee is to cover the people who are going to actually do the work. It's not, it's not money that we're getting. So it is something to cover those fees because our staff, again, is, we run lean. We don't have a lot of extra staff, so we need to allow them to be able to do that. Um, and I'm sorry that you have bad actors out there that have made this difficult, but we have to address that. Um, we, we want, we want people's neighborhoods to be safer. We want you to run your business. That's, that, that's fine. We're not against business. But in this instance, I think that staff has worked very hard to get this ordinance on the book. You know, I want to thank our, our, our city manager, our city attorney, who's been, you know, working very, very diligently to get this done and attorneys, the city attorney staff, because I know, I know it's more than one person. But this has been a, a lot of work to get here very fast. And we know it won't be perfect, but we'll keep working. You, like, like we said earlier, contact, feel free to contact. We'll, we'll work with you as best we can and we'll let you know, you know, what we can and what we can't do. Uh, but I just want to let everybody know, and I know I've said this before, the ordinance won't be perfect, but it'll be, it'll be, it is something. We won't do nothing.
It's a foundation.
Councilman Green?
Well, I think, I think Councilman Jones said most of what I, I did want to thank staff because this has been a very, uh, we, we have done a whole lot of work in a very short period of time. Um, and I also, I wanted to thank the public as well for coming and sharing their thoughts, being willing to have the conversations with us and, and recognizing that, um, you know, we're really talking about something, we're going to have to come to a compromise here because it can't be one way or the other. We got to meet somewhere in the middle. Um, and I, I'm really excited about, um, the ordinance that we have. I do think that, like I said, I think it's probably going to address 98, 99% of these problems. We do have a very small, um, at least of the ones that we're aware of, uh, group of STRs that have caused a, a problem. And so I, I want to get those problems addressed. Um, I, I hear, I hear what, what you guys are saying about, uh, what's going on in your neighborhoods and I want to address that. And, uh, I, I really feel, uh, hopeful that this ordinance that we have is going to address most of those issues. Um, like Councilman Jones said, this is not perfect, um, but let's, let's get it, let's get it started and let's see how it works out and then continue the conversation later. And I appreciate everybody's patience. That's all.
If there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, motion to approve the ordinance is set forth in the caption.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the Louisville City Code by amending section 4-151, definitions of chapter four to amend the definition of property manager and add a definition of short-term rental STR unit, adding a new division for short-term rental units to chapter four to adopt STR regulations, adding a new section 15-139, limited parking zones to chapter 15 to adopt parking permit regulations, amending article three hotel occupancy, occupancy tax of chapter 14 to clarify the remittance and audit of hotel occupancy taxes for STRs, amending section 4-198B, floor area of chapter four to clarify the application of the International Property Maintenance Code regulations to the floor area of room dimensions, amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville to include a fee for short-term rental unit permits, providing a repealer, severability, penalty and effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Um, the last time this was this contentious, it was the smoking ban, uh, back in 2010, 2011. Um, and I think we had a lot of the similar types of comments about where, where one group's rights began and where another group's rights ended. I think we came up with a pretty good ordinance that, uh, you know, here we are 20, 10, 12 years later and I walk into restaurants now and if I smell a cigarette, it's like, wow, that's weird. I haven't, I haven't noticed that in a long time. And everybody came out ahead. Um, I appreciate all the hard work, especially over the holidays, uh, both by residents, by staff, city management, um, and also by our city council. Uh, the amount of time and effort that everyone is, and brain power that everyone's put into this is, is not small because this is uncontested and uncharted territory. Um, there is a lot of conversation out in the, uh, space right now. Well, this is, this is the right way and this is the wrong way. And, uh, we get a lot of pontification by attorney generals and other people that might have our fate in their hands. And so we have to figure out how to navigate that, um, while doing what's best to maintain, uh, neighborhood integrity. Um, so, uh, this, uh, $50 a meeting that we get really doesn't compensate us for what we're doing, um, to maintain our, our city. And, and I, I want you all, regardless of where you, you lie on that spectrum, to understand that the folks up here make really tough decisions. They're just, just like you. They're your neighbors. Um, that's, that's how local government is supposed to work. Um, so they're trying to do what's best for the community as a whole and try not to create favoritism and single out, um, certain groups and others because that's not what government is for either. Um, so I, I appreciate all of the work and I want everybody to understand that, um, at the, at the end of the day, we're constantly working and striving to improve Louisville, to make it better, to make sure that we have strong neighborhoods, uh, that make sure that we have strong businesses. And sometimes those two issues will bump up against each other and we just have to navigate where that line is. Um, so it is an evolving conversation. Uh, I want to encourage you to continue to give us input as you see things evolving out there. I know we're going to continue to look as well. Uh, we do have a couple of, uh, small things to follow up on that, that staff will follow up with us on that. Uh, but thank you again for this. It's, it's been a, a great collaborative conversation and this is how government should function. So thank you for that. Item D, public hearing. Item one, consideration of amendments to the thoroughfare plan including the addition of future streets based on the Old Town Transit Oriented Development Master Plan update and the addition and modification of Red Bud Street, McKinsey Street and Purnell Street to reflect proposed capital improvement projects. Amendments to the thoroughfare plan are proposed to reflect the recommended street grid as shown in the Old Town Transit Oriented Development Master Plan update and to adjust Purnell, Red Bud and McKinsey Streets to reflect proposed capital improvement projects that aim to improve safety and traffic flow at the intersection of Railroad Street and State Highway 121 Business. The Transportation Board and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous 5-0 approval of the proposed amendments on December 19th, 2023. And it is recommended that the city council approve the proposed amendments to the thoroughfare plan as presented. We do have Mr. Richard Ludke available for questions and David Selman, our city engineer. Um, there is a public hearing and it is now open. I, I don't have any comment cards for this one. Um, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote to close the public hearing. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the thoroughfare plan as presented.
Move to approve the proposed amendments to the thoroughfare plan as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, visitors, citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speaker will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. Um, do we have any public comment? All right, we do. Super. Thank you, sir. First public comment, we have Ms. Nancy Sansom. Happy New Year, Nancy.
It's my pleasure to be here this evening and I just want to say good evening to you, Mr. Mayor and the council members and staff. My name is Nancy Sansom. You're familiar with me. I reside at 4015 South Garden Ridge Boulevard at the Evergreen at Louisville Community for Seniors for the last six years. By the way, the Louisville Senior Living Challenges Organization is back. Um, and also behind me, you'll see our, um, many of our members wearing blue shirts who, um, are very active in, uh, our organization. Um, we'd like to, uh, thank you, um, uh, so much, uh, regarding United Way, Denton County, Salvation Army, CCA and Serve Louisville and others for being aware and coming to our rescue in helping many low and fixed income seniors to meet their yearly skyrocketing rent increases this last year. On the front page of your packet, you'll note that there is a, um, a picture on the front page of last month's December 2023 Louisville and, uh, Copel Community Impact Newspaper. We were interviewed by their journalist and she, um, wrote a, a very nice article in that paper. I'd recommend people read it. Um, our organization is now supported with over 60 members and about 20 outside of Evergreen at Louisville. We're trying to grow beyond our own community. Um, and we are dedicated to meeting with city and, uh, state, uh, officials in communicating our concerns relating to survival in these difficult, turbulent and changing times we're living in. The senior population continues to grow in Louisville and Denton County. According to, uh, United Way and Alice Research, there are more than 42% of seniors living below the survival threshold. Denton County shows 117.5% increase of seniors population grow, growth. In addition, the Louisville senior population has increased, uh, according to research, uh, 8.3% this last year and it's growing more every day. More, more elderly are coming to this area because their families live here. They're moving from all over the United States and that's been a continuing trend and looking for someplace that's reasonable to live, live with. Northern Texas evictions has hit a high record level since the pan epidemic. Instead of showing the, the usual, um, return to seasonal trends, there's been a high sp, a spike of about 1,229 evictions in Denton County alone. The Texas Relief, Relief, uh, Relief Program stopped taking applications November 2023. Um, also the funds have run out that we've been able to tap into, um, and, and now as far as we know, no longer are available for us. So it does appear a good time that Louisville Council and the mayor give considerations to the urgent needs of seniors by developing a formal Louisville Senior Advisory Board. Both the cities of Grapevine and South, um, Lake have these boards and, um, there are many others in northern Texas that have, that these forms too. The purpose of this type of, uh, uh, senior, uh, advisory board, uh, could be to provide a link between community and other, uh, senior services, helping to identify best practices, safety issues and specific senior needs related to, and this is a big one, architectural barriers around the city. Um, we have a lot of people that fall and, um, we'd like to be a conduit to dispersing information on senior access and a, uh, connection to other community, um, senior resources, advising the city council with community insight and other senior issues that impact its population. city council with community insight and other senior issues that impact its population. Once again, we thank you very much for listening to us, and we have a few other speakers coming. Thank you so much.
Joyce Fuel? If you please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry?
Your name and address for the record, please.
I will, I'm a little bit hoarse. Joyce Fuel, 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. I live in Evergreen at Louisville. Well, kind of like the Reverend Joel Osteen, I like to start out with a joke or something funny. Oh, but I didn't write down my joke, never mind. I had a long speech prepared, well, my five minutes anyway, because I knew you'd buzz me if I went over. But my sore throat and my cough kind of hit, and I didn't have a stand-in. Thank you, somebody else just made me take a cough drop. I'm going to address that in a minute, too. Anyway, I didn't have a stand-in, so here I am. I considered sign language, but I don't know if you had an interpreter. But it's okay, I don't speak sign language. It's okay, though, I took my cough medicine, and it has codeine. No coughs. Oh, I hope he can't hear that back there. But it's okay. The only person that rode with me is old, and she didn't know the difference. Seriously, though, I would like to reiterate the plight of seniors in Louisville. I just got my rent notice, and my rent has gone up $60 a month, or $720 a year. Social Security gave me a raise, but this part's all true, the joking aside, just didn't want to make you by smile here. But they also raised my Medicare payment, so it kind of lifted at zero amount of raise. My husband got a whopping $27 a month raise. Our retirement payments have not changed, that's the only other income that we have. So our rent is now more than 50% of our net income. With groceries and gas and electricity prices going up, we're certainly not getting that $720 more in income than we're going to be paying in rent. So in short, I'm just asking for your assistance, city council. I know I'm only supposed to talk to the mayor, but anyway. In, if we institute, these are just thoughts off the top of my, a cap on rent, something that is going to help seniors because our income is, sorry about that, our income is fixed, but yet we live in a low-income apartment complex that can, at least, that's my term for it, I, we had to qualify income-wise. And so we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Tinnarello?
I reside at Evergreen at Louisville, 4015 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. And I also want to thank you in advance for listening to us this evening. Mine's going to be kind of probably shortened street, but my, the reason I came tonight was I wanted to kind of express my serious concerns about the sidewalk situation in the area of where we live, specifically the, okay, let me put it this way, I do a lot of walking. I, I don't have a car, and so I walk to the grocery stores and back. So the sidewalk that is in front of Evergreen and goes alongside Garden Ridge north to the intersection of Main Street is very unlevel. I don't know if you can see it tonight, but I fell last week, and I thought I had broken my jaw, but thank goodness, I, I don't think I have, it's just hurts like crazy, but, and that's not the first time I've fallen there. I have developed, I've lived there for Evergreen, excuse me, for four, four and a half years. I've, I've developed during that period of time macular degeneration. The wet macular degeneration, where I have to, I get shots in both eyes monthly. My eyesight has kind of deteriorated because of this. It's, and some things I see are kind of, I don't want to say abstract, but fuzzy, and I, I mentally in my mind, you know, I pick my feet up and, and go, but it, it creeps up on you, and all of a sudden, there's this rise that you don't, I didn't see, and I trip on it. Another little input here I wanted to mention was the fact that I've, the transportation systems, one is GoZone in Louisville, and the other one is the Dock of Bus. They have been kind of unreliable for the seniors there at Evergreen. The one with GoZone in particular, they don't, they are not consistent in regards to whether they're going to pick you up in front of the lobby, you know, the front door, and they say they're going to meet us somewhere else. Well, that means I'm going to have to walk on the sidewalks again to get to that, sorry. And anyway, because of that, that's why I do a lot of walking. And I'm just, I don't know, I'm going to have to come up with some other type of solution, hopefully. But that, not just that one street is, of course, this, okay, I wanted to say that there are others in the Evergreen Senior Living Center there that have voiced their concern also with me, even those that are, have wheelchairs or mobilized chairs, you know, that can run. They have problems on that, trying to get over the humps. So that was something else I wanted to mention tonight. That was the, the main concern. And I've spoken with others, and they say there are other streets, you know, in the vicinity that had that same problem. And with so many seniors accumulating here in Louisville, I, I just wanted to stress that and how, how concerning it was for us. So thank you for listening to us this evening. Greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Jan Cole?
First of all, I just want to say that I'm a new resident here. I've been here for five months. I moved here because my daughter and son-in-law were here, and they said, Mom, we want you to come live here close to us. Well, I have three daughters, and I've lived with each one of them, and I've moved every year. This is my last move, guys, okay? So you have me in Louisville till I guess I kick the bucket, as they say. I want you to know that I've really, really liked being here. I like this little town. I've been downtown, and I went down to Christmas and saw the lights come on at the trees, and I want you to know that I feel good here, and I think I'm going to stay a while. I told my daughter, I said, you're not moving me anywhere else. You might move me into a hospice somewhere where I don't know where I am, but that's probably not for me. Anyway, I am here to support the group that we have just spoken, because just yesterday, I've been here five months now, six, seven, I think, since May 1st. I got a rent, new rent notice that I am going to be paying $80 more a month, and I don't like that. I'm on an in, fixed income, too, and if it's going to go up $80 this year and the next year, that's $1,000 a year right there. Where do I take it out of? My groceries that are going to go up? Car payments that are going to go up, maybe gasoline that are going to go up? I know that you guys are still in the, the youth of your life, most of you are, and it's not going to be long till you're going to be where we are, and you're going to be living in this city, probably, and you're going to be saying, gee, I wish I'd have done such and such, because I'm now getting older, too. Because this is who we have. Our, our youth are getting older, older and older, and we're living longer and longer. So I think we really need, as the Louisville council, to look at that situation. I appreciate very much your time, because I know I've been in your shoes, I've been on councils in other cities, by the way, and it does take a real heart desire for to sit where you are, to look at the issues, and to do what you need to do for your community. And what I see, you're doing a very good job, and I thank you for letting me speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Sherilyn Cox?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sherilyn Cox. I live at Evergreen Louisville, address is 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard, Louisville, Texas. First of all, I want to say thanks. Thanks to each and every one of you for, for your future look into what seniors need, for the plans that you put in place to help seniors. Even though you see that sometimes it's not enough, as Jan said earlier, the rent is going up an extra 80 bucks. At 80 bucks every year, you tax out. If you've got $1,500 and your rent is nine, I'm a mad person, in about four years, you got to move. Where do you move? Because now you have to pay somebody to move you. You have to pay all of that that goes with moving, which you don't have. So thanks Louisville, mayor, Claire, group, team, for all that you do. My, I have some property that I have a question about that was pre, that's been approved. I'm trying to fix, see where the status is on it. It is at 305, 305 South Round Grove Road. It's Palladium USA property, and it was approved back in September of 2023. But the property is just sitting there, and nothing is happening to it, and so is there any update on it?
I think our, our development team, Marichal, may be able to help you with that.
Who? Okay, okay. So thanks.
Happy New Year, thank you. Think that's all the comment cards I have for this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item F, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any requests?
No, sir.
Council, any requests? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, regular hearing. Item five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas authorizing the acquisition of fee simple title to 3,599 square feet, .083 acres, legally described as Lot 1A Block C, Timber Creek Square, Phase 1, in the Charles Demae survey, abstract 335, and the acquisition of a partial release of access eastward for approximately 4,564 square feet, .105 acres, legally described as Lot 1F Block C, Timber Creek Square, Phase 1, in the Charles Demae survey, abstract 335, at 301 East Southwest Parkway for use as a public park, determining the public use and public necessity of such acquisitions, authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish just compensation for the properties to be acquired in accordance with all laws, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take all steps necessary to acquire the needed properties in compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute condemnation proceedings to acquire the properties if purchase negotiations are not successful, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to reach a settlement agreement regarding the acquisitions following the institution of condemnation proceedings, providing for repealing, savings, and severability clauses, and providing for an effective date. The proposed property to be acquired will be used for the developed public park in the triangle area known as Glory Park or Parque de la Gloria. As required by Texas Property Code, Section 21.0113, the city is required to first attempt to acquire the necessary acquisitions from the landowners voluntarily through the making of a bona fide offer prior to filing any eminent domain procedure. City staff has attempted multiple times to discuss dedication and/or purchase of the property with the property owner's representatives, even offering at one point to build another access point off Southwest Parkway. The owners have not responded to the city's offers to purchase the property. It's recommended that the city council consider and adopt the resolution as set forth in the caption above by using the following motion, which is prescribed by Texas Government Code, Section 2206.053E. I move that the city of Louisville, Texas adopt the resolution described in Agenda Item Number G5 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Exhibits A and B attached to the resolution, said descriptions and depictions being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for use as a public park. We do have Ms. Stacy Anaya, our Parks and Recreation Director, available for questions. If there are no questions, council, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that the city of Louisville, Texas adopt the resolution described in Agenda Item Number G-5 and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire for public use the property described and depicted in Exhibits A and B attached to the resolution, said descriptions and depictions being incorporated into this motion for all purposes for use as a public park.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. First up, Councilmember Meredith, would you mind if we started with you?
Couple of library activities for the week. Make your own mocktails for adults Tuesday, January 9th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Registration is required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Resume is with Renee for adults Thursday, January 11th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. No registration required at the small conference room. Happy New Year.
Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I have several items for, from the, for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances. There will be the Circle Game, which is contemporary dance presented by Regeneration on January 14th, and there will be two performances. Black Box Songwriter Series, Traveling Red River Songwriters, presented by Louisville Grand Theater on the 18th of January. Texas Tunes, Jimmy Dale, Gilmore, and the West Texas Exiles, presented by the Louisville Grand Theater.
No re-election.
January 20th.
Sorry, couldn't help myself, Bob.
And as always, acoustic jam sessions every Friday night, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville from 6:00 to 9:00. Several activities going on. There's an art talk, Art and Play, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on January 9th. Conversations with Artists, What Were They Thinking?, presented by Visual Art League of Louisville on January 14th. And there's an exhibition going on right now, Deconstructed, presented by- 14th. And there's an exhibition going on right now, Deconstructed, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through February 3rd. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Richard?
No report, Mayor.
Stacy? We got a lake level?
I do have a lake level, which is an indication of it's going to be a great year. We are 1% higher than we were last year on this day, so we're at 93.1%, and that's at 520.53 feet.
Thank you, sir.
No report, sir.
So quickly, I wanted to thank the parks for the polar plunge opportunity on last Saturday. That was a lot of fun. I didn't realize, though, until later on that there's actually a second polar plunge that I accidentally volunteered for as well that's being coordinated through our neighborhood resource officers. So I challenge anybody up here to join me in that when it's time to come, or I may just stand alone again. That's okay. But anyway, it was a good event. So thanks, everybody came out and took part in that.
Councilmember Green?
I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a Neighborhood Grants Workshop tomorrow night at 6:30 at Thrive. I believe we're talking, the topic is all of our grant programs for property enhancement. So really good information, and if you're like me and you have a lot of stuff around the house that needs to be fixed, come and see how you might be able to get some assistance in doing so.
So I just want to say happy new year to everybody. It's good to see the staff. It feels like we've been gone for forever now. And no to Patrick's invitation to the polar plunge. No, sir. Just be cognizant of the weather. We have storms coming through tonight. Drive carefully tonight to everyone who's here to get home, and in the morning, probably it'll be a little wet, too. That's all I have, Mayor.
And it's going to be really cold in the morning, too, so they say.
It's the winter time.
It is, it is winter. But the winter in Texas usually, you know, 20-degree wind chill factor is not fun. I would just like to say, I am, when you can't get any, when you think you can't get any more proud of the people that you're surrounded with in staff and employees, something else happens to make you proud. And you never disappoint. Staff members that are in this room and staff members that are on duty and working, excellence, you're always striving for excellence. And you meet it, and you always meet it. Sometimes it might take you a, or whatever, a little extra step, but you get there. And you've pulled off something on the STR ordinance that has not been done in the metroplex in the most definitive and expedient time that you did it. It's taken other cities two years, and they're still fighting over this. So kudos goes to everybody in this room and beyond. And I'm so, and I'm so proud to serve the public with y'all. Thank you so much.
City Manager?
I received, I just wanted to give kudos to one of our directors, but really, it's all the directors, because this is a culture that we've established here in Lewisville. But I got an email, very impressed by our, about our Parks Director, not because of all the accomplishments that she had, has done this entire year, but because of the inclusiveness that, that her department has shown with one of their team members who's been sick this year, and they did their annual celebration of all their accomplishments, and they had this individual basically on computer watching the entire thing. They've made pictures of this gentleman and brought him along on all their adventures and all their successes. And so I just wanted to give kudos to our Parks Director for her inclusion and giving some grace to an employee that needed grace. And I also wanted to thank all of our other directors, because I know that's how we all live. So, thank you.
Well, happy new year to everybody. Welcome to 2024. It is an election year, so it'll get a little silly, I think, as we move forward. I did have the opportunity to do a quick review. One of my responsibilities is to write a review for the public on achievements from the previous year. So it was kind of a lot of fun to go through that document and see what all we did. It's pretty amazing what our staff and our citizens were able to accomplish in just 365 short days. So I am always blessed and proud to be up here and to serve for the amount of time I have. It's pretty amazing. But y'all done good work. Let's have a great 2024, and let's not pay so much attention to the nonsense that's on social media and that the news is trying to just sell eyeballs. Let's focus on our community and how we make things better. And I know everybody in this room does that, so thank you so much. With that, we do need to return to the workshop for just a brief. I think Mr. Cruckey has four to five slides to finish up, and then we will come back into this room to finish the regular session.
Mayor, Council, thank you once again. I will try to move through these last slides. I'm actually glad we paused at this one, because I want to take a couple of minutes on this slide. This is about the safety rating. Remember, I told you that we asked people, "How safe do you feel in certain areas?" And with these five categories, we asked daytime and nighttime. Last year, pardon me, in 2021, we saw about a 12-point average difference between day and night. Not surprising. You're somewhere at night, especially if you're not familiar with it, you just feel less safe. And that tied very directly to streetlights in those surveys. In 2019, it was about a 13% to 14% difference. So it's kind of statistically similar. This year, between 18 and 32-point difference, a dramatic difference. We don't know the why. Remember, I told you, we can't answer why on this. I can tell you that the lowest ratings were coming, or the, one of the, one of the triggers that we found in this, and we'll hit on the last slide also, is people who said they felt unsafe in commercial districts, not talking all the rest, but just in the retail areas, overall had lower survey scores. Don't know exactly why that is, but some anomalies we found in there that we've not seen in previous surveys. I want to dig some more into this data. I don't really have enough to answer the whys, but there's clearly a difference day and night. And so that's something that we're going to be analyzing. When we look at the results of surveys, we try to find actionable items, and this is one that police department will look at and say, "What can we do?" I don't have an answer, but we will find some kind of solution. Interestingly enough, also, this third bullet, where I talked about in an earlier slide, that online surveys are very sensitive to social media. Okay? When there's a lot of social media coverage of something, it reflects. Back in 2019, there were two violent crimes during the survey period, and we even broke it down by time. Before the violent crimes, our safety numbers were pretty good. After the violent crimes, they went down. Now, it wasn't enough to totally skew the results, because most people answer in the first three days of the survey, but it did skew it a little bit. In 2021, nothing. We had no problems, did the survey. In 2023, right before the survey went out, we had the murder in Central Park with the teenager who was killed, and that got a whole lot of social media talk, a lot of social media talk. And you will notice, Parks, 75.03, that's the lowest rating we've had for Parks. And it's almost entirely opinion, can't prove it, but almost entirely because that event happened right as this survey was going out, and it was fresh in people's minds. So just to show you how social media directly impacts online surveys, and that's also why we recalibrate our survey results every two or three years with that phone survey, because it is much more accurate. Again, our goal is 90% in each daytime category, 80% in each nighttime category. Now, if you look at our daytime, 94% own neighborhood, 92 in retail areas, 94 in Old Town, 92 for the city as a whole. Other neighborhoods, 82. That's a little quirk we see in statistics every single time. People feel very, very safe in their neighborhood, 94% during the day, almost 80% at night. But as soon as they go to the neighborhood next door, those people are sketchy. I don't know the streets. I don't know the people. It's clearly a problem. It drops down by 12 percentage points. That is statistically significant, even though for somebody else, that is their own neighborhood, and this is the sketchy neighborhood. But it happens every time. Familiarity increases a sense of safety. We are not at all surprised by this, not at all concerned about this, until you see only a 51% nighttime in other neighborhoods. It goes right back to this nighttime variance we saw. And you see that, that is a 31-point difference. So it means, I live in Vista Ridge Estates. If I travel to another neighborhood, if I go to Valley and I don't know the streets during the day, I feel a little bit less safe. At night, I'm almost very, feel very unsafe. And the neighborhood is the same. The people living there are perfectly good people, with maybe one exception sitting at the end of the table. And yet, we see that statistic, and it shows up every time. It's just a dramatic change there.
I feel like that says you need to stay in your neighborhood, James.
And we could try that. That could be the next mayoral campaign, just stay home. And then retail areas also, again, 92% during the day, 62% at night, exact same scenario, 30% drop at night. We don't know why that is, for a minute, you know, that's hard.
I actually have a thought on that. And so I noticed that if you look at the percentage of men versus women, you've got, you know, 57% of the people who responded are women. I mean, I'm not going to speak for all women, but I watch a whole lot of crime TV, and as a woman, I live in a different world than a man. Like, I can't, I can't go out at night like men can without having to worry about what my surroundings are. And I feel like that's a pretty common theme in women. So that might be something to look into, to look in, what is the percentage of men versus women respondents in past surveys, and see if that has anything to do with that variance.
Very valid hypothesis. I have not done a cross-tab of women, men on the safety, but I'll run that. That's easy enough to run. And it makes sense. Just this week, I saw on social media a person saying that she was at Walmart, and somebody followed her through the store, and she felt very unsafe as a result. And women responded saying, "Yeah, I have that happen all the time." Men responded saying, "Do something about it." It's a strange conversation. But that's, that's a good period. Look into that. That could help figure that out. Ultimately, though, I think the point is that we've got a 94%, pardon me, in the old neighborhood, cities as a whole, 92% of survey respondents said they felt very safe or safe in the city as a whole, even though they felt less safe in certain, in the other neighborhoods. They felt safer in the city as a whole than those sketchy other neighborhoods. So, good numbers, again, good numbers. They were trying to incrementally make better, and that whole night-day thing is just, it's noteworthy. Slide, please. If we can be able to stop talking on social media, we get really good numbers. That should be, just stay home and stay offline. So how are the survey results used? I've touched on some of this a little bit. We do look at the trend from 2014 to current. Now, we bring in some new, we had one new question this year, no, two new questions, and two that were slightly amended, but we compare them over time to look at trends. If you see a consistent downward trend, that is statistically significant, so over the course of time, a six to 10-point or more, then you start to wonder, is there something going on that neither people are perceiving it in a negative way, or we're missing something? If you see a consistent positive trend, you celebrate that, and you figure out, what have we done to make that happen, because we want that to continue. So you look at the trends. Sometimes there's anomalies. You might have one year that just jumps out. And we had one of the ratings I touched on earlier, that last year, when we had the intensity for improvement, was 50-some-odd percent, and usually, we're around 40%. 40% is a great number. 50-some-odd percent was unusual. If you look statistically in the trend, it stands out. So we just hit people at a really good time that year, or something happened with the survey sample that caused that.
I remember sitting here in this room, and you talking about, holy cow, how these numbers are off the chart. We don't really know why.
Because, our 2021 survey was some of the highest results we've had. 2019 and 2023 are almost identical across the board. So 2021 may well have been an anomaly. We also had a smaller sample size that year. I don't know, we had maybe some survey fatigues, we had several other surveys that year. Our sample size, in fact, I have that, I brought the numbers, because I know people in this room love numbers. And in 2019, we only had 302 people take the survey, which if that were a phone survey, that's not enough even to be statistically valid. So the 2019 survey had a lower number. 2021, we started moving it up, and now we've got a good number this year. So we look for those one times that could be, we can find a tie, like the unsafe feeling in Parks tied directly to that story. We look for trends to see are things going up, are they going down, and remembering that a slight curve one way or the other could still be a straight line, if you look at it over time. And then finally, department directors receive the full survey results tomorrow morning. Good for you. I know you're looking forward to that. Bring snacks. And we will give a special emphasis on their operations. I'm available to meet with department directors to go through their specific numbers. We do use some of the survey results as performance measures, so you'll see them on the dashboard and in some of the budget documents. Last one, I think. Yeah, so here's just some overall impressions. Cross-tabulation showed some very unusual trends this time that we've not seen before. And again, one of them is people who reported lower feelings of safety, especially in retail areas, gave lower marks throughout the survey. Now, that's not uncommon, that people who report feeling less safe would give lower marks, but the fact that retail areas was so much of a variance compared to everything else. And maybe it's because commercial areas have a generally lower percentage anyway than the other areas. People who've had a lower satisfaction with the appearance of the city, we added two questions this year, and one of them was about appearance of the city, and the other talked about various issues. People who've had a lower opinion of the appearance, especially trash and litter, were lower almost across the board. It's not they were all negative, it's just instead of very happy, they were happy. Instead of happy, they were unhappy. Instead of unhappy, they were very unhappy. And so that's a trend we have not seen before. We've not really asked those questions that way. And then finally, I love this one, and I really want to harp on this one, because I am a city staff member, and I like to champion city staff. What we found in the survey is there were survey respondents who reported having some kind of direct engagement with staff or facility. If they said, "Yes, I have visited Lila," pardon me, not Lila, Thrive, "Yes, I have worked with animal services," "Yes, I have worked with city staff in these," their numbers across the board were higher. So that tells me that the more engagement that our staff can have with the public, the more we get the public into our buildings to talk to our people and our people, the happier they're going to be. And this number here tells me that's the case. It's always been a bit of a trend. It was a much larger, more prominent trend this year. And then finally, again, all of this, we're going to look at that and say, what can we do to get that incremental increase? 87.12% is such a good number. 88.12 is better. What can we do to get to 88.12? And that is a much better problem to have than saying, "Gosh, we're at 68. We sure love to get a passing grade." We've got passing grades across the board. We are an A/B student. We're an A and B-plus student. We just want to treat those B pluses under As. So, I think that's the last slide? That was the last slide. So I am happy to take any questions without complaint and probably without making a joke. Okay, forget the joke. I will make a joke. Because I'm a funny dude.
It's not all looks, James.
I think I'm a funny dude. Seriously, y'all, any questions I can answer for Mayor, Council?
Maybe, maybe more of a comment. I think that, that comment point on, I've had an interaction with staff, and it's high. It is so difficult to talk about the other, the city, when there's a face and a voice and somebody who's helped you. And I know the people that exist within these four walls, they're helpers by nature. They want to fix problems. They want to work. So I think that, right there, the more we can do to make sure that residents who don't feel seen are seen, to create those touchpoints. I mean, people look at things like Western Days and go, "Oh, I mean, that's, no, that's an opportunity to interact with your city." And so, so I love that framing. I love that conversation. I hope we continue to figure out ways to do more of it.
The others?
Good job.
All right. Thanks for your time.
With that, we're going to close this thing. Audio? There we go. As there are no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. It is 8:56 p.m.